In this meeting with the Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with whom we're taking a stand for all.
All right, number two, open public forum, anybody that is not on the agenda that wishes to. Hi Cliff, come on up.
Well, Cliff Johnson from the Cold Spring area Historical Society and I think three or four things. Invite you and the general public, it's free, coming up on June 12th, no, June 4th, have your emergency plans in place.
You're looking at me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
This is the third time I've announced that our kind is coming to talk about the USS Ward and and its involvement in World War II's. It was a mostly Minnesota crew supposedly shot the first, our first shots of the Japanese or, you know, the Pacific part of the war. I say have your emergency plans in place because he's been canceled twice because of weather. So.
Tornado warnings that day?
Tornado warnings that day, right? Anyhow, that's number one, number two, we've got a garage sale coming up next week. There's signs up, but, oh, and this, everybody's invited, there'll be treats, cookies, the cookie lady will provide treats. It's at the Depp's, six thirty on Wednesday, June 4th. And it's sponsored in part because of the legacy amendment and those funds that the holders of Minnesota approve for activities like that. Anyhow, back to the garage sale, bring things in, it'll be at the Lions Park on Monday and Tuesday, the, what is that, nineteenth and twentieth? Twenty-first and then the twenty-second, twenty-third, seven AM to six PM. And then on Saturday, the twenty-fourth, from seven till eleven. Look at the handout, it's got what we can accept and can't, you know, some obvious things, no refrigerators, that sort of thing, if you're bringing clothes, please have them cleaned. Newest exhibit in the theme room is baseball. And we had a baseball a few years ago, but you'll find this one different, there's lots of interesting things in there. Use my three minutes, can I do my way back one?
Quick.
Before the Opera House came down, we were given the opportunity to tour the inside and to remove what we felt were some historic things. Came across this, I've gotta sort of believe that this was an aisle light in the Opera House. Just has the look and the feel of it. If you come over, this is a photo, we've got this hanging in the museum. It's what I believe was a lobby light, it's got a twelve-foot chain on it and it's, you know, kind of long and skinny and fabric is very, very delicate, but come see it, we're open Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, from noon till five. No, thank you. Have a good meeting.
Thanks Cliff. Thanks Cliff. Anybody else? Otherwise, we're gonna move on to number three, approval of the agenda, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Ryan makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second it.
Mike seconds it, any discussion on the agenda? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
All right.
Against, motion carries, consent agenda. Eight minutes, April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting and May seventh, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty twenty-five. Special meeting, recommendation to approve the consent agenda as presented, can I get a motion on that? Doug makes a motion, how about a second?
Second.
Ryan seconds it, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Number five, update on fire hall construction, Nate Bell, Donlar Construction.
Good evening, I'm just here to give you guys a quick update on it, so I'll just start with the overall schedule. We're tracking for basically that last week of August, is what we're seeing from the schedule. So basically, it's kind of the same as from when we ran into the bedrock, so we had to, granted that we had to blast out of there. So we're still tracking on that original schedule from after that date. For the schedule, we just poured the apparatus, last week we did the office area, then this week we did the apparatus space, so that's all poured out and then the mezzanine is also poured out as well. We did that yesterday morning. So that's done and then in the office area, they're doing the roughens right now for plumbing, mechanical, electrical. Fire suppression came in and measured all the rooms and that for their stuff, so that's ordered. They should be, I think, starting in like a week, they said it was about a two-week delivery for some of their stuff to start showing up, so the roughens are going well. It's getting furried out on the inside and there too. And then we also set, I believe it was Tuesday, it was supposed to be Monday, but Tuesday, the air handler is up on the roof. And all the roofing is completed up there besides doing the detailing with the sheet metal trim and that. And then on the exterior, the brick, they just finished, they actually pulled down the hydros today. On I guess the south side of that prior space, so that granite and block are all up on that portion where the truck bays are, where the old red doors are. And then they're working on the backside now of that same, where the old red doors are and they're hoping they have probably two and a half days and that will be all the way up too. And then they'll continue working their way around the building. And then they should be bringing in another crew in to help with their productivity to speed up and help them doing the interior CME wall, starting tomorrow for like the decon shower areas on the interior for them. And then Kramer just showed up here. They kind of moved in yesterday, they got the storm drain and then the rain leader for like between the building and the bedrock on the east there. They just got that put in and it was tested today, so they have that, they started back building that area. And I believe, well, tomorrow's probably gonna be a rain out for them, but they're supposed to start the front with doing the sanitary and then now the water line. So probably by the end of next week, we should have that portion in as well. So that's kind of the brief update on the schedule and then budget-wise, we're sitting on where we were from when we came in with all the other PCOS and that. There's one more probably that should be coming in, I have it basically finalized to send in with some ads and then credits as well for some ceiling changes and like a hose reel, electric cord reel that we got, we switched to a different manufacturer to get it in time since there's a long lead time on their original one, so. So that will be coming in, otherwise, we're about the same for cost-budget wise that way, it's all tracking on budget that way. So I don't know if you guys have any questions on that.
Yeah, we're, how far are they on the granite, when are they figured out on the granite?
Yeah, they just had it all delivered. So they got the wings coat done on the front where the apparatus bay is and then they're gonna start kind of on the tower, they got the first row kind of started there. So they're focusing on the brick right now, so we can get the bulk of the windows in, because we need the brick in for that. And then they're supposed to have two crews, so they're gonna be doing the brick and then the granite kind of at the same time, but their, our goal with them is basically to have the brick, granite all done within like three weeks here.
So the same crew is doing the brick and the granite?
Oh yeah, they have, they can have anywhere from fourteen to twenty guys out there, but yeah, they split them up. So there's ones that are better at granite or brick and then the ones that just do CME, work on the interior, CME stuff, so they have them split up that way.
Thanks. Transformer, Mr. Charlie had mentioned at a meeting that I was at, he's, last fall, he says there might be a transformer issue or again. Is that solved?
Uh, no, we should be good on all of that. Our goal with Kramer's, depending on the weather goes here, and then if we can get Lakeside out of there with the brick and all that on the backside. Once Kramer gets those piles leveled out in the parking lot area, we can bring upgrade to where those pads go and we'll get those all poured and then Erickson wants to.
Some transformer then?
Yeah, we should be good on that and same with the generator, the generator is ordered as well and is supposed to show up. I think that was July is when that was supposed to be coming in, so we should be good on all that. Then I know we, Kristen, Kristen Lewis came around this morning for a tour, so like anytime you guys, any of you guys want a tour or whatever, just let myself or Kristen know and we can coordinate it and it can be during the day or if it's later in the evenings or it's better for you guys with work or whatever, we can coordinate it and we can bring you guys through the site. For sure, now that it's all poured out, so you got hard surfaces to walk on on the inside and everything that way.
All right, so on schedule and on budget?
Yep.
That's what I like to hear.
Yep, me too, makes my job easy.
Anything else for Nate? Thank you very much.
Thanks Nate.
By the way, it's Nate's birthday. Oh, happy birthday, happy birthday.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, number six, Spartan Fields temporary easements.
So we've talked about these the last couple of meetings, we got them all finalized, both the temporary and permanent, so that's the next item on the agenda.
All right, recommendation to approve temporary easements to Spartan Fields LLC for the construction of utilities and roadway for the extension of Ninth Street North on city property as well as access to Spartan Fields property for construction. Can I get a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
Ryan makes a motion, Doug seconds it, any discussion on this? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Number seven, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash ten, dedication of permanent easement, same thing? All right, recommendation to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash ten, a resolution dedicating a portion of city property as permanent easement for roadway drainage and utilities purposes. Can I get a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Ryan makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second it.
Mike seconds it, any discussion?
Just one, one thing on this, just for the developer, to make sure that the resolution gets sent in to the county for get this recorded with the Platches, so we know that it's not landlocked.
All right.
That's it though.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Number eight, computer use and cybersecurity policy.
This came up with our recent audit, but it also usually comes up every year when we renew our liability insurance, it's a really big thing right now, cybersecurity. The league has free training, so part of this is that we're gonna require all the employees to take it. It's online and it's free, but then it also covers kind of, you know, safe use of your computer and things like that, so recommended by the league to pass these two policies.
All right, recommendation to approve a computer use and cybersecurity policy for the city of Cold Spring dated May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, can I get a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Mike makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second it.
Doug seconds it, any discussion on it?
I had a couple, did you get this boilerplate from the League Minnesota Cities?
Yeah.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Number nine, safe electronic transfers and payments policies, will this be it?
Yeah, this one's pretty much comes with the same, from the same person who works with their cybersecurity, just obviously, that's what it says, you know, for transferring money and things like that.
Okay, recommendation to approve safe electronic transfers and payments policy for the city of Cold Spring. Date, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, can I get a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
Ryan makes a motion, Doug second it?
Yep.
Any discussion on that? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Number ten, Public Works Director Report, John Stevie, along with Sam Butler.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
First thing you see on my report is the approved testing of the biogas, just a little recap. I think we talked about this last fall, the gas itself that the VVF tank produces has an H2S in it and it's fetching up the building and staining, rusting out everything. So we had to shut it off last year and put them strictly on natural gas. Been working with Stan Tech on what it takes to clean up the biogas. The reason why this happened is because back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, when we started this process and the brewery gave Stan Tech their sample results, they changed their process after we built the building and they put a chemical now inside the product that creates this H2S gas. And we need to look into scrubbing it down and cleaning it out before we burn it. So this is just a quote from Pace Analytical, which is the only lab that does this testing on gas for thirty-six fifty-five, so it's kind of the start of the process of get some sample results and then move forward and continue in our discussions on how to handle this gas.
All right, recommendation to approve hiring Pace Analytical Services for testing of biogas at the pre-treatment facility at a cost of three, three thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars to be paid from pre-treatment department line item sixty-eight thirteen. Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Brad makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second it.
Ryan seconds it, any discussion? Doug. Doug, that line item sixty-eight thirteen, that's, that line item is, that's all due to the brewery, right?
Yeah.
So this will come out, they'll be paying for this.
Yeah, the whole, the whole pre-treatment budget is all brewery.
It's all brewery.
We have a separate, they're no longer wastewater, mix of wastewater, it's all pre-treatment.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Finished up interviews last night and my recommendation is to hire Jeff Elias to maintain the ballpark this summer and Blake Ludwig, young kid from town here, lives up in Rookery, to be our summer part-time help.
All right, recommendation to approve hiring Jeff Elias and Blake Ludwig as seasonal parks employees for up to thirty-two hours per week from Memorial Day to Labor Day at sixteen dollars per hour, can I get a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Brad makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second it.
Ryan seconds it, any discussion on this? Other way, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say Blake is a good kid, I know his family well, so he'll be good.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Um, and just some updates, May nineteenth, MinDOT will have oil for air patching, so you'll see that out. We also had a, I had a company come in and around the Frog Town Park Shelter, the sidewalk has kind of settled in some spot, or like kind of the southwest corner, maybe fifty feet. For nine hundred seventy-five bucks, they came in and they mudjacked it up back to where it's supposed to be and got rid of a tripping hazard, so they actually got that done right before the meeting, it looks great, if you're down there, take a look, you can't even tell, they drilled holes in it and pumped it full, but it's perfect, so pretty excited about that. That'll make Sam's job a little easier, talk about Main Street, there's some add-ons that will be happening or that have happened. Like any construction project, you find things when you start digging, that sewer line that had the big sag in it on Main Street between Seventh and Eighth. We ended up, I think the original bid plan was for a hundred feet, we ended up going back two hundred fifty feet?
Yeah.
The pipe was running backwards that far. Thankfully, we were able to get back to a spot where we were able to make a point four percent slope, I think it is. And it didn't affect the service connections for those houses, so no sense in stopping where the original bid was because that doesn't fix the problem, right, we were just, we were just had a sag in a hundred fifty feet of it, so we went back far enough to where we had good slope and that's completed, also, there's some storm drains, you know, that had some busted up rings that got replaced, different things like that. Today, the DEF called, they had rusty water, I believe they were changing out the gate valve on Tenth. So if you do have rusty water, we're not flushing hydrants, they are replacing some gate valves that didn't work. That'll stir up the lines a little bit, create some rust, so run your outside spick until it clears up. But outside of that, the project itself is moving good, I'm saying I might have some more info on that, but I think they're gonna be paving a lot sooner than we think, so.
So what is that, John, with those add-ons, that extra hundred something, that'll be assessed to property owners, right, on the sixty-five thirty-five, just like the rest of the project?
Oh, I'm not certain, Sam can title that.
The utilities were never being assessed as part of this project, so what we had for utilities on this project was two valve replacements, the one in Eighth and the one in Tenth, and then the small sanitary sag repair, sanitary main sag repair. When we did the original feasibility report, the entire reconstruct project was to be assessed, but with the smaller utility repairs, we never planned on assessing any of those to property owners because it's just two valves and something. I mean, it's really utility repairs, not reconstruction.
So we replaced sewer and water from Tenth to?
No.
From, it's just a short section?
Just that short, so always from Tenth to wherever Eighth was not repaired?
No.
Because that's like twenty-two feet to East.
Okay. So just wherever that sag was is what's. Between Seventh and Eighth, right?
Yep, half a block.
Half a block.
So none of this project is getting assessed, it's all, the city's paying everything, correct? Boy, it'd be nice to do that to every street. End their sarcasm there.
Is Kramer's had the bid for that, right?
Yep.
Has anything changed with that?
No.
They're wearing different hard hats.
What's that?
They're wearing different hard hats that say Nap River.
Yeah, okay, but the contracts and.
No, everything's the same, I'm assuming they can't, you know, they have to finish off their contracts that were made prior to the sell of the business.
Because I'm assuming Kramer was the one that had to put up the bond.
Yeah, I'm sure that's all the same.
That's their, that's their business.
Yep.
You said about paving sooner than later, what, do you have an idea what that date might be?
Uh, I believe, let's see, I read it in my report. So they're gonna be grading the rest of this week, calling out some reclaim the rest of this week, probably beginning of next week, and the plan is to pave towards the end of next week. But that would just be the first lift, then they come back.
Right.
Middle to end of June.
Right, but it's only gonna be dirt for a while, another week.
Yeah, hopefully.
And you're watering it at the same time.
Yeah.
They're doing it phenomenally.
Oh, God, yeah. I have not heard one complaint about.
I think half the reason why the blade was out today was because there was getting so many ripples in there and they wanted to fix that, so we're driving, it wasn't so rough.
It is, no, they've, they've been doing a really good job at that. You can let Kramer's know about it too, because they do.
We stress that in the pre-con.
Yes.
Anything else for John? Otherwise, thank you very much. Then we'll move on to eleven, City Engineer Report, Sam Butler.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, we'll kind of just, yeah, we talked about Main Street, I just have the project update, so I'll just run through what I have here in case we didn't talk about anything already. Construction began in the beginning of May, reclaiming is all complete, removals, I believe are now complete, utilities were complete, I think, yesterday, and then like I said, grading, call-in reclaim and grading will be through the end of this week, beginning of next week and then paving the end of the following, if, if all goes well. They are supposed to be pouring curb on the east part of Main Street tomorrow. Looks like rain, so if that, looks like rain tomorrow and Friday, so if that doesn't happen, I could push back the paving.
Looks like rain, so if that, looks like rain tomorrow and Friday, so if that doesn't happen, I could push back the paving potentially, but we'll see what we get through.
Is that where they bring in the machine, do it with the machine?
Yeah, yep, yep, so they have curved pour over on the east end and then some on the west end, the intersection of tenth and main, they're pouring that western part and then that radius and and some, some sidewalk in that area and then a couple other panels and some other areas that needed to be replaced, so. If concrete stays on schedule, everything else should stay on schedule. If concrete gets pushed, the paving may get, may get pushed back, so. Um, other project updates, listation number one, uh, they were down there last week grading out for, for the sidewalk, uh, maybe touching up the path in a little bit. The plan is to pour the sidewalk tomorrow, um, pending weather again, uh, and then paving, I believe sometime next week as well. Backwash tank, uh, design electric is supposed to be getting in within the next couple weeks to, to install the conduits. Uh, and then grading and paving to be completed shortly after that conduit installation. Uh, River Lakes fifth and sixth edition, Kramer has been working on punch list items, um, most of it complete, they replaced some, some curb. The plan is to pave that one. I think that was, oh no, paving tentat- tentatively scheduled for the nineteenth, so again, pending weather on, on all of this. Spartan Fields wrapped up construction plans and specifications, so just kind of waiting on a couple permits. I think Cory's just gotta get his F P S stormwater permit and then the, waiting on the watershed permit. So, again, hopefully soon with grading on, on that one. And then the wastewater treatment facility, thirty percent design, uh, the cost share agreement. Think we discussed last time, there are some requested changes by Rockville, so that will be at their council meeting tonight. And then there were some minor changes and I think we're bringing it back to council at the end of this month, so. Hopefully, pick back up and get things moving again. That is all I have for updates, unless you guys have questions for me.
Anybody got any, Sam? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Number twelve, Police Department Report, Chief.
Council, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, just updates for me, in April in Cold Spring, we had two hundred and twenty home incidents, twenty-five medicals, so eleven suspicious activities, seventy-one traffic stops with twenty-six citations and then a hundred and thirteen miscellaneous calls for service. In Richmond, we had seventy-one total calls, three medicals, five suspicious activities, uh, twenty-four traffic stops with eight citations and then thirty-nine miscellaneous calls for service. Officers are going out, uh, they started a couple weeks ago, um, checking for ordinance violations on people's properties. If it's the first time you've had a violation, you get a door hanger or a letter, um, explaining what it is, you get fourteen days to clean it up. If you've had a, the same violation past years, you get a city citation right away. Just to save time and not have to keep warning everybody year after year after year, so, um, if anybody out there gets those, please clean it up and uh, get it taken care of. Uh, we're just looking for compliances, best and, here's what we're asking for, so. Um, as long as it doesn't snow anymore, uh, the speed truck will be out and about again. Um, if anybody has locations out there that they'd like to see it, let us know and we can get it on the schedule. And then we've had an officer that has started meeting with, uh, Recore Area TV. Um, they're doing monthly, um, talks about current scam trends or other current, uh, issues that we're seeing, so, um, I think it runs on Facebook and Channel Ten and that stuff, so, um, try and update something monthly, so should be seeing that out there too. But that's all I really have, unless you guys have questions for me.
A couple, um, I like the reports, they're pretty thorough. Are they working out okay, the, you're using a different system now with?
Yes, um, they're still working on the system. Last update I heard, um, they hadn't checked all the boxes, so the company that we're going through, the company hasn't given them their first payment. We started with them in October, uh, November, um, and they hadn't finished up everything they had promised, so. Still working through some issues, but we're getting there.
Oh, it's, it's nice to see that. Um, well, the only question I had was, I was looking at the traffic stops and, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I counted twenty-seven warnings and seventeen citations. Does that seem lopsided to you or is that? I mean, it's nice to have a friendly community, but.
Yep, and I think a lot of those, um, and I know we have been doing, there's been, last month was a wave of, um, extra traffic enforcement for distracted driving. This month is an extra wave, or actually, it's the most hundred deadliest days of the summer between now and September, so there's extra enforcement for speed throughout the entire summer, so citations are gonna go up. Um, they encourage more enforcement than warnings when they're on those. Um, and then I would also have to look and see what, uh, the citations are for. If they happen to come across people without a driver's license or both suspended or those ones where you really don't have the option, you have to do some type of enforcement action. It, it, but you do see those trends at times.
Yeah, well, maybe just because of where I live, but there's still a lot of speeding going on in town, so Red River would be a good place. And, I don't know, my observations have mostly been these motorcycles that seem to be doing most of the speeding, but anyway, that was all I had.
Anything else?
Thank you very much. Thirteen, Fire Department Report, Chief.
Hello, Dan.
How are you?
How are you doing?
Tired of this weather.
Oh, kidding.
Mayor, Council. Um, just an update for this last month and for the last six months that we've had. We're at two hundred and eighty-five calls for the year. Uh, we're on track for over six hundred again, the way it's going. Extremely dry out there, as you can see up in north of Duluth, it's over almost, I think it's close to thirty thousand acres now.
Thirty-five the last ice.
Wow.
An hundred and fifty plus houses and cabins gone. So, yeah, it's very dry out there, uh, we'll get some rain. Restrictions are still on for burning within townships and three foot by three foot by three foot in the city. Other than that, uh, I guess I have to watch out for June fourth because Cliff said it's gonna be a crazy day, so. But you guys have any questions for me at all?
Alright.
We went, I went to that, uh, meeting last night in Rockville.
Yeah, I did too.
Yeah.
Big turnout.
It was very good turnout, but they're gonna do what they wanna do anyway, so.
Yeah.
It's frustrating, that's the frustrating part about it, but.
Yeah, I thought it was kind of bad that they didn't take questions.
Yeah.
You know, you're gonna hand the mic around, but they're going to the table and just taking stuff, you know, not everybody hears the same question and the same answer.
Yeah.
I was not enthused with that at all. I, I thought it was poorly run.
Yeah. Bertram, Jeff, Jeff Bertram is there and Jeff Howe. Right, yeah, they talked a little bit, but they were totally against it.
What's the general public saying about it?
Oh, they hate it.
Oh.
They're, I think.
One guy from the council went there, he said he's got over a thousand signatures in the population, is what he said?
Little over two thousand.
Two thousand? He's got one person that said they want the J-turn, well, everybody else is no.
So they're gonna put it in anyway, probably.
Well, it's a, it's a state thing, so yeah, I don't know.
And then they're gonna add one at forty-seven and Bellcler Acres. They're saying there's gonna be four J-turns between
Yeah.
This eight, uh, Bellcler Acres are putting, well, the one at Loves is there already, but, well, three more J-turns is, is what their plans are. Again, down the road, it's all gonna happen in one year, but eventually, there's gonna be four J-turns in that short little distance.
Oh my God.
I think it more, the, the general audience and all the people that are against it is because well, they don't, don't understand J-turns that much, but they're more mad that they don't fix the problem at Loves.
Right.
You know, and.
So they're never gonna add to the problem.
Well.
It's a cheap way to go for the state to solve some of that safety issue, that's what it is.
But, yeah, yeah, there was a bunch of.
There is, yeah, a bunch of it, and they're gonna put a real nice setup in.
I mean, there's J-turn over on West of Richmond there, you know, forty-three, it, it works, but you gotta have long enough J-turn to do it.
You can't have the J-turns like they got at Loves. Basically, come off the interstate, you gotta go over two lanes because your J-turn is right there.
Yeah.
That's terrible.
Yeah, anyway, so yeah, it was a good turnout last night for Rockville, but.
I feel for the farmers that gotta go across their west combines and tillage equipment, you know, they'll slow the traffic down.
Rodney, Rodney had a letter, Rodney Schaefer, the chief of Rockville, had a letter last night that said, you know, to go across, you gotta go down and turn around and come back to go towards Grand Lake. So, that's school buses, so it's, yeah, not really the best idea thing, but, whatever.
Yeah, that's right.
Alright, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for taking care of us.
Absolutely, Fran, just for you.
Okay, number fourteen, City Administrator Report, Chris Docard.
Uh, the first thing I have is, um, just the annual, um, approval to not waive the monetary limits on tort liability. This is part of our annual insurance.
Recommendation to approve maintaining the liability insurance coverage and furthermore, that the city does not waive the monetary limits on municipal tort liability established by Minnesota statute four sixty-six point zero four. Can I get a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
Ryan makes a motion, how about a second? Brad seconds, is any discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Um, the second one, a couple, uh, months back, I got an email from, um, a local city kind of surveying all the communities, cities saying, what do you pay election judges? And I was kind of embarrassed, ours was not only the lowest, but a lot lower than everybody's. And the, except for the one city that was doing the survey and that's why they were doing theirs. So I, you know, put these together for you and I'm asking that we increase our election judge pay for twenty, starting twenty twenty-six, to kind of stay in line with everybody else. They do work hard in this precinct, they have a lot of orders.
Recommendation to increase the election judge pay to fifteen dollars per hour for election judges and sixteen dollars per hour for head judges. Can I get a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Mike makes a motion? Brad seconds it?
Yeah.
Any discussion on this?
Well, essentially, these people are volunteers and we're lucky to have them, you know, so it's, uh, they're taking, screwing up their schedules to do something civic, so I think it's a good thing.
And we do get quite a bit of it reimbursed by the company.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
The third one I have is the fire contract amendments you had asked me to make. Um, so I made them, I gave you a copy of the redline version. Um, I guess the only thing I would ask for you to consider is that, um, I don't know if you wanna do contract amendments or if you wanna do a memorandum of understanding. That was something that, um, College Board had brought up in our, one of our first meetings, and that we could put into effect right away. This contract won't be up until twelve thirty-one of twenty-six, so.
Well, we could approve this and still do the memorandum of understanding, right?
Right, yeah, if you do the memorandum of understanding now, then this would go into effect and then, and then when we redo the contracts, hopefully, that would just become part of the new contract, because we'd already be using that system for billing.
So if we put this in effect under our M O A, that would be for twenty-six, right?
Twenty-seven.
It would, it would, it would start with the billing that we do in twenty twenty-six, which is for expenses in twenty twenty-five. Yes, otherwise, it'll be a year later if we wait for the contract.
And, and I, I agree with you, that's what we should do, but they don't have any money in their budgets for twenty-five. You know, when we were at the meetings, they didn't put anything in, anything up and above.
For twenty-six.
For twenty-six, so if we do this M O A and say it takes effect in January and then you pay whatever twenty-five is, well, they have no money to pay for it, how are they gonna pay for it?
That's their problem.
Well, they take it out of their roads and they can take it out of other departments, what they said they'd have to do. Yeah, okay.
And, yeah, I don't know.
Do they have, do they have a say in this, like, if we had, if we did, uh, draft an M O A, is that, is there, we just say and that is what it is?
Well, I don't suppose they have to sign it, you know, so it'll be back to the conversations we've been having.
Cause I mean, I'd be, I'd be absolutely for it, but I'm just curious on what happens.
Because we have a contract through twenty-six.
But, I mean, I wouldn't be against doing that though, just to see what happens, I guess, either.
Well, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna incur costs this year.
Absolutely.
You know, and, and next year, so I think it should be an M O A and they can accept it or not, I mean, we're, we are offering a service and we have tried for a year and a half, two years, good faith try, to get contracts and get them to agree with something and, I mean, Chris, you, I and Ryan were at that Wakefield Township meeting and we're farther apart now than we were a year and a half ago, so I mean, we need to just, here it is, buy the service from us or, or don't buy the service from us. It's, you know, I, I think we need to, you know, be strong and just go do it. It, it is what it is, I mean, we're, we're taking the hit, you know, as, as a city on this project too, so. I would be in favor of doing the M O A for, yeah, starting January twenty-sixth.
And did the wording in there sound okay to everybody, did it make sense?
I thought so.
Okay.
Do you need a motion for that or not?
Um, yeah, I should put that in here.
Doug makes a motion?
I'm making a motion.
I'll second it.
Ryan seconds it. Any other discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Uh, the next one is just, I was just gonna ask if any of you were planning on attending from, uh, Stretts County Municipal League meeting next week. I have to turn in the hours competing tomorrow morning. Doug, you're gonna go?
Okay.
That's here?
It's at the Legion here.
At the Legion here?
Yep. Tran?
Yes, are they doing?
What's the date, do you stay?
No, they haven't started yet.
Okay. That's next Tuesday, I'll go.
Okay.
I don't think I'll be able to go.
I won't be able.
Okay, alright, and then, and then I'll post it too.
That twentieth, Chris?
Yep.
Is that still on in the morning?
Yes.
That's still, okay.
Okay.
This, what time is this? This is in.
It's at six P M. Yeah, he's somewhat of.
Oh, there was a different one.
Yeah, he's only coming with, for us to meet with Wakefield Township on the road.
I thought they changed the time, but he was gonna say.
Not in the morning.
Okay, okay.
And then I got, uh, an invitation for, to see if we wanted to be in the Bonifess Parade. Does anybody wanna be in it?
Oh, I will.
Okay.
If I'm around, for sure.
No.
Okay.
I have to look if I'm around, yeah.
And you can let me know, uh, as long as I know somebody's gonna be, I'll submit that we'll do it and then.
Yeah, I'll, I'll definitely be there.
Okay. Alright, then just a few updates. Um, actually, I just found this one out yesterday morning, so I didn't know about it, but, um, as you all know, we've been working with, well, just to back up, this stretch of road up on Clark Road Two, kind of from the roundabout past the school, let's go back three, four years, a couple of the residents up there asked to have a speed study done because they wanted the speed limit decreased. So MinDOT did a speed study and actually recommended that it be raised. So, um, we've been working, um, John, Jason, myself, with the school and the county to try to come up with some traffic calming plans that would satisfy MinDOT so we could keep the speed limit the same, potentially lower it. And the county applied for a grant, a full grant, not the Safe Routes to School because that's a matching grant, but a full grant earlier last year and they got turned down, and then in the fall, they reapplied and they just found out that they got it, so they are gonna go forward with it. Um, I don't have a formal, they'll need your formal approval, I don't have that in front of me yet. We're just getting started with this, but construction will likely be in twenty twenty-six, but I just wanted to let you know that. Um, and, and basically what it is, is just, um, a couple of those flashing lights for people, for pedestrians to cross safely. Oh, actually, I gave you guys a, a map, that's better than breaking. So it's some sidewalk, couple of, um, flashing lights, push button crossings.
Kind of what we had a grant for about eight years ago, they, that, uh, school turned down?
Yeah, that was the safe routes to school, so it would have cost us, but good news is this shouldn't cost us anything. So, I just wanted to let you know. They'll be more kind on that, but. That's good news. Also, just an update for the, at the last meeting when we interviewed. Architect firms and you guys asked about getting a citizen rep, so I did put something in the newspaper and posted it. And I do have one volunteer already, so. I'll give it to the next council meeting and then I'll get your approval on that. But I also was gonna see if we should invite somebody from the library, at least to sit in on the library portions of the meetings and get their input on. What their needs are.
Well, we could have the point, they could just come.
Okay.
It's a public meeting.
Yeah, but if it's our review, I would just make sure to invite them whenever we're talking about libraries, so they don't need to sit through police and city hall stuff.
Right.
Okay. Uh, this is the last week of session at the state, so we're waiting to hear capital budget. One update, um, I heard from both. Lisa Damas and Jeff Powell's assistants saying they wanna know if you can phase the project. So, um, we've been talking about it, John, Tanya, um, Sam, the staff at Stantec, to see if there's. And they came up with a potential phasing, so we did tell them that because we think that will increase our odds of, of getting. We won't get as much funding upfront. It's a little bit less than we originally asked for, but we think a better chance of getting something. But we'll know soon. Hopefully.
Soon.
Yeah.
July.
Yeah, well, if they don't do it now, hopefully they'll do a special session. And just lastly, I just wanted to mention that Splash Pad is open for the summer. Normally, we open at Memorial Day, but because of the warm weather, it's open and people are loving it.
This weekend.
Not this weekend, though. It's been getting used, though.
Yeah.
You see a lot of people there, John?
That's it?
That's it for me, unless you have questions.
You've got anything for Chris? Chris, thank you very much.
Yes.
Let me go on to number fifteen, list of bills and additions, recommendation to review and accept payments on the accounts payable according to the list and supplemental list. Presented by city staff. Can I give a motion, Brad?
Yeah, I see Fran Relmer's gonna get paid, so I make a motion.
Brad makes a motion, I'll second it. Ryan seconds it. Any discussion on these?
One time, we should not second him, see what he says.
Try it. I'm waiting for it. Take everything off but that one.
Yeah.
What's this B S? I'm waiting for that to say, what's this B S? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. General questions, comments from city council, Brad?
I have none.
Nothing.
Just one thing, I just wanted to, just to thank you to the emergency responders that are out there. I just seen a couple things that happened over the last couple of weeks and the composure that your guys' staff has is just incredible. And I just wanted to thank you guys for what you guys do and what all of your staff do, because it's. It's a blessing that we have people that are as dedicated as we have, so, thank you.
I'll second that.
And thanks for taking care of us.
All right, um, I got one, Farmers Market, every Wednesday at three to, from three to six at Blue Heron. Go check out everything. They've got asparagus right now, I think, but there's a lot of, a lot of stuff all summer, so. But it's every week from three to six on Wednesday. All right. Motion to adjourn.
A move.
Doug makes a motion, Ryan seconds it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you very much.